Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January fourteenth City of Apocca Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would all please stand with me for a moment of silent prayer and the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. During today's meeting, we will have a public comment section for every item that is on the agenda. If someone is here and has a item or something that is not on the agenda that is planning and zoning related, now would be the time to be recognized. Seeing none, we'll move on. Election of Officers for two thousand twenty-five. Chairperson, anyone have a nomination?
I nominate Bill Gussler.
Okay, I don't know that guy, but we'll pencil him in here. All right, I accept. I'm not gonna have the problem we had last year. You turned it down after we gave it to you. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
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 Second by Commissioner Doomey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, vice chairperson. Do I have a nomination?
I would nominate, Mr. Chairman, I would nominate, uh, Mr. Howard if he would like to continue to serve.
Do you accept?
I accept the nomination.
Okay. Commissioner Washington has been nominated. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Approval of meeting minutes from December two thousand twenty-four. Does anyone have any changes or additions?
Nothing.
Alrighty. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as written.
Commissioner Ryan, thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Public hearing number one, ordinance number three zero nine one, change of zoning Plymouth Harbor subdivision. Owners Pomarni Farms LLC, Macaulay George. Applicants Jeff Summit, care of GL Summit Engineering. Location twenty-two sixty Plymouth Sorento Road, twenty-two forty-four Sorento Avenue. As this is quasi judicial, I need to ask, has anyone here had ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
No.
Very well. Mr. Thong.
Good evening. This is June Zoom Planner at the Community Development Department. The applicant has requested the rezoning of the properties located at twenty-two sixty Plymouth Sorento Road and twenty-two forty-four Sorento Avenue from RSF one A to RSF one B. The total size of the properties is nine point five one acre. These properties are part of the Plymouth Harbor subdivision located west of Plymouth Sorento Road and south of Ponca Road. The properties have residential low suburban future land use, which allows three point five dwelling units per acre and RSF one A zoning. The pro- the purpose of rezoning is to reduce the minimum required lot area. DRC has recommended approval and recommended motion is recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning from RSF one A to RSF one B. Staff and applicant are available to answer any questions.
Very well. Is the applicant here and did they have a presentation, Mr. Thong?
No presentation, here are your questions.
Okay, anyone have question of the applicant? Very well. Is he, anyone here from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, uh, I'll make a motion to find the proposed change of zoning from RSF dash one A residential single-family estate district to RSF dash one B residential single-family district dash large lot consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Land Development Code and compatible with the character of the surrounding areas. Recommend approval of the proposed change of zoning based on the findings and facts presented in the staff report and exhibits.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Washington. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Mott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, special exemption Central Florida Preparatory School. Owners Central Florida Preparatory School, Inc. Applicants Rowena Flanders, location eighteen hundred Martin Road. As this is quasi judicial, I will have to ask, has anyone on the board had any ex parte communication on this matter?
No.
Sorry.
Very well. Mr. Hamza.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department. The applicant has submitted a special exception request to, um, increase the maximum number of students allowed from six hundred students to seven hundred and twenty students at the Central Florida Preparatory School on the site located at eighteen hundred Martin Road. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the property. The total area of the property is six point three nine acres and currently has the Central Florida Preparatory School on the site and they're requesting the increase in number of students with their, uh, eventually their expansion of the school. The property has a future land use of commercial and has a zoning of planned development as shown on these maps. Here are the list of special exception review standards the applicant must comply to according to the land development code. Here's the site plan of the proposed expansion of the existing school which will, um, they'll apply for, um, a minor development plan at a later time after the special exception is approved. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of a special exception to increase the maximum number of students allowed from six hundred students to seven hundred twenty students at the Central Florida Preparatory School in a PD, uh, zoning district subject to the exhibits and findings of staff report. The recommended motion for planning commission is to approve a special exception to increase the maximum number of students allowed from six hundred students to seven hundred twenty students at the Central Florida Preparatory School in a PD zoning district subject to the exhibits and findings of staff report. Applicant is here in attendance today for further, uh, ca- questions, uh, to be answered.
Very well. Does anyone have questions of staff?
I do, Mister Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Doomey.
Well, it sounds like business is good, which is good. But is there any issues right now for, uh, traffic flowing in the area with the drop off pickup?
That's something that the applicant will be able to answer since they brought a traffic consultant.
All right, hold on one second. Anyone else have any questions directed towards staff?
No.
Very well, okay.
Luke Klassen, Appian Engineering, two 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 one Lee Road. Um, thank you for bringing that up. I just wanna appreciate staff and their report, um, group of findings. As far as the traffic goes, there was some concerns. Initially, we met with the police chief as well as the city staff from public services to address some concerns. There was some backing up on Martin Road, but they've since, uh, handled that by doing phased, um, drop offs. And so they've addressed all the issues. Uh, and the police chief's already been out there and said he's fine with the way everything's at. But we also have a traffic engineer who's here and members from the, uh, Central Florida Prep School who can answer any other questions, yeah?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I, I can verify. I was stuck there one day and I have not been stuck since. So whatever happened, uh, I've been, well, pass it. My question to you, um, is, you know, currently it's six hundred students. They're asking to go to seven hundred twenty students. Is this been in the original development plan all along? And what, if so, what is the ultimate number that they would like to get to stop at through a growth process?
So kind of two-part question, two-part answer. So the original development PD did have the school in it and when it was approved, um, three years ago, it did have this phase two actually shown on the plans for the gym, uh, um, the gym extension. And so it's actually part of the original plan set, but it was listed as a phase two. And so that's why we're having to come forward and with the, uh, construction site plan and minor development plan. The special exception, the only reason that we're having to do that, because we could go straight to the construction site plan for the, um, or minor development plan and construction site plan for the gym expansion. The special exception is to go from six hundred students to seven hundred twenty. The special exception is required because it's a school within the PD and the commercial district. And so staff can probably speak on that better than I can, but it's a special exception requirement. And right now that special exception as approved has a maximum of six hundred students. Their ultimate goal, their maximum build out for the whole site, because they're really, they're constrained by the site restrictions, the maximum build out would be the seven hundred twenty students. So there is no more, no further they can go on, on this site. How about that?
And I believe you said that this is part of the gymnasium that I've heard, um, Yeah. in, you know, press and all that kind of stuff.
There, on the original plan, there was just the gym listed as phase two. This is the gym and there's some additional classroom building. So the classroom buildings are helped to serve the additional hundred and twenty students, or maximum of a hundred and twenty students.
Any more question of that? Commissioner Ryan? I got one question. Will there be adequate parking for this increase of student body?
Yeah, so we already have the, um, we had members of Central Florida Prep here. They've addressed all the parking concerns and especially with their own staff and being able to make sure we're adding some parking on the west side. If you look at the site plan where we're doing the gym, we're rearranging some of the parking to have the traffic flow work better for drop off as well. But we're, we're addressing the parking, yes.
Yeah, I saw the added, uh, parking space, but I was wondering if there's enough, enough added parking.
Based on their current needs, yes, enough parking for them.
Any more question of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would be honored to make a motion for this, given that education's a very important part of our community here. So I will make a motion to, uh, approve a special exception to increase the maximum number of students allowed from six hundred students to seven hundred twenty students at the Central Florida Preparatory School in a planned development zoning district subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Doomey. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, special exemption Pave-A-Lot Storage Warehouse. Owners Pave-A-Lot Asphalt Maintenance Team. Applicant Joseph Lewis, location nine five one South Highland Avenue. As this is quasi judicial, I would have to ask the members of staff of the commission if they have had any ex parte communication on this matter.
No.
Yes, sir.
Very well. Mister Hamza.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Amir Hamza. Uh, I'm a planner. The applicant has submitted a special exception request to allow the development of a storage warehouse on the side, side located at nine fifty one South Highland, just, uh, north of East Tenth Street. These are the vicinity and aerial maps of the property. The total area of the property is zero point five six acres and is currently vacant. The property has a future land use of industrial and has a zoning of, uh, mixed use downtown as shown on these maps. These are a list of special exception review standards that the applicant must comply to according to the land development code. Here's the preliminary scratch of what the, of what the storage warehouse will look like at a later time after the special exception is approved. They will, uh, submit a, uh, minor development plan, uh, con- uh, which, uh, they have to have an actual drawing by, by, done by an engineer. So, but, uh, yeah, this is the current, uh, idea of what it might look like. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of a special exception to allow the development of a storage warehouse within the mixed-use downtown zoning district subject to the exhibits and findings of the staff report. The recommended motion for planning commission is to approve a special exception to allow the development of a storage warehouse within the mixed-use downtown zoning district subject to the exhibits and findings of staff report. And applicant is in attendance today for further questions or comments.
Very well, thank you, sir. Does anyone have questions of staff?
Just curious, the, uh,
Commissioner Washington.
Excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Pardon me. Uh, the warehouse, uh, storage building, uh, is this a pub, uh, public storage building?
To my kno- to my knowledge from, I had a con- a conversation with the applicant. It, um, it seemed like it was, uh, they're, they're the o- owner of the property was gonna use the storage warehouse. But currently there's no, like, preliminary i- i- idea of what is gonna be used, if they're gonna rent it out to, uh, e- external applicants. But, um, currently it's the owner that wants to develop the, the warehouse. Yep.
Anyone else have questions? Commissioner Ryan.
Yes, is there any hazard materials gonna be stored there or?
Pardon?
Any hazard materials gonna be stored or flammable material?
Uh, not to my knowledge as of now. That's gonna come at a later time of what the storage, uh, warehouse is going to be when, uh, they, uh, submit a minor development plan. But currently, it's just good, it's just right now to allow a warehouse on the, the special exception is to allow the warehouse to be, uh, built on the, on the property because the, the mixed-use downtown zoning requires a special exception to, uh, have a warehouse on the. The future land use is already industrial. That's why they're asking for a special exception.
I, I understand. Is, is the applicant here?
Uh, yeah.
Hold on one second. Anyone else have questions of staff?
I have another question to say.
All right, Commissioner Washington. Sir, hang on one second.
Yeah.
Mister Hamza.
In the staff report where you have, um, it says staff report, staff responses, staff has no objection, no objection, no objection, and no objection. But then later on, later down, I just noticed it says, uh, staff has no objection. And then it says applicant has ensured that their plan will not impact land values. And then, uh, further down, uh, you have that same extension of that, um, staff has no objection when it talks about overburdened existing public facilities. And the last one, uh, staff has no objection, applicant has ensured that they will comply with all federal laws and, and, um, regulations. I'm just curious, why was that, um, staff has no objection line extended for those three responses but not the ones above? Was that just an administrative, uh?
What, what do you mean by staff? Like, like, all of the questions should have staff as no objection. That's how you answer the, the basically the applicant would answer those questions and then staff would then answer if they have any objections or not to what the applicant has answered to their answer.
I realize that.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to say is that as I'm looking at the document, we get down to the last ones. You have, uh, the sentences extended for those particular lines. And I'm just wondering, maybe you might need to look.
Yeah, let me, let me just interject. Uh, that would be because some of those require a little bit further elaboration. There are some cases that have come before you where we've had where staff does not object, but there's some where we felt it's need to, the need to elaborate a little further in depth due to the nature of the comment and the question.
Okay, just, you know, as I read, it just give me, gave me the, um, the feeling that there was some unreadiness that the applicant will in fact comply. But that was just my feeling. So I just let it pass.
Understand.
Very well. Any more questions of staff? Commissioner Ryan. Okay, so if we, if we approve this tonight, will this come back again to us or this our only shot at it?
Uh, it will come back for a minor development, uh, plan, um, um, uh, uh, application. So this is just to allow a warehouse on there, but to build a warehouse, they will have to get, uh, minor development plan or CSD approved.
If I could just, um, interject, um, the only way it would come back is this, this is just for approval of the use tonight. It would come back if the building is over twenty-five thousand square feet in area. If it's under twenty-five thousand square feet in area, it's a minor development plan. It would be approved by the Development Review Committee.
Okay, is it gonna be over twenty-five hundred?
They can't be over twenty-five thousand because they're already there, uh, floor, maximum floor ratio is around eleven to twelve thousand. So it, they, they can't go over twenty-five thousand because of the site is constrained. It, it most, it most likely won't because they can't build us, they can't build a warehouse over twenty-five thousand square feet because it, again, because of the site constraint, their maximum floor ratio is around eleven to twelve thousand. Some are within that figure.
Okay, my, my question was, will it come back or not?
No, it won't, no. No.
Yeah.
Any more questions of staff?
I, I have a question.
All right, Commissioner Mott.
It is currently zoned industrial, you said?
No, the future land use is industrial, but the zoning is mixed use downtown. So to allow a warehouse on a mixed-use downtown zoning, it requires a special exception permit. But the future land use is industrial.
If it weren't a warehouse, what could be on that property?
Um, you'd, I'd have to look into the, uh, there could be other industrial uses, but, um, the, um, they were, the, um, the principal use table would, uh, would, uh, uh, tell you on our land development code what is, uh, allowed on, uh, mixed use downtown, uh, uh, would, when the, in, any industrial use which has, uh, permitted use on a mixed-use downtown zoning, that, they will be allowed. But so for, to my knowledge, a lot of them require special exceptions in the ma- mixed-use downtown, uh, zoning district.
So the, the concern that I have right now is you're saying that this is a, a warehouse?
Yeah, storage warehouse.
A storage warehouse. It won't be greater than twenty-five thousand square feet because the property and limitations.
Yeah.
But we don't know anything about the current desired size, who would be there, what would be there, et cetera.
That will be, uh, decided on a later day when the minor development plan is submitted. Yeah.
It's just gonna be a storage facility for the stage.
Sir, hold on one second. Hang on. You have to be recognized first.
Okay.
Um, Mister Hamza, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any more questions of staff?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
I, I just, I, I don't, I don't know how you can expect us to approve this and we don't even know what's gonna be stored there, whether it's hazardous material, flammable material.
Little applicants.
And you never, you never asked the applicant what they plan to store there?
Yes. It's, it's just a staging warehouse.
Sir, sir, please.
I'm asking, I'm.
Where, where, staff is recognized. You're not, you'll have your chance in a minute. Staff, please answer his question, Mister Hamza.
I ask a question. You didn't ask the applicant what they plan to store there, whether it's hazard material, flammable material?
Well, I asked the applicant before during then. There's the, to my knowledge, like, when we had the discussion, there was no, gonna be no hazardous material on the site.
You asked that question?
Yes, and it was actually noted that they have to comply with the, in one of the questions, uh, that the applicant had to answer. They, they said they'd have to comply with, uh, think, um, they would not, no hazard, like, not hazardous material, but something in terms of, uh, if it would affect the environment of the area or not. And the applicant said, uh, they wouldn't.
All right, any more questions of staff? Very well. Okay, Miss, Miss, go ahead.
Uh, members of commission, if I could just make a clarification too. Um, as, as you noted, this is quasi judicial. So the only consideration that, that comes down this evening on a use consideration is the criteria, what's listed in the criteria. So any approval or any denial needs to be based solely on the criteria and the testimony that you hear this evening. Um, as far as uses and so forth, uh, ultimately, if it's gonna be a warehouse, it has to be a legal use. That would be part of that next process. It cannot be an illegal use. It cannot be, um, you know, something doesn't comply with the city code or any of those federal, local, state regulations. Um, so, but as long as it's a legal use and complies with the code, that would be okay. And that's evaluated, you know, further, further, further down. Um, and it's not part of the criteria here other than just, is it legal? So any information that's offered as to what may be stored there is, is for informational purposes, um, as opposed to something that a decision can be based on.
Understood. I, I understand that, but I just wanna get on the record what's gonna be stored there, just for the record.
Understood. And that's perfectly fine to ask that question.
Very well. Okay, any more questions of staff? All right, Mister Lewis, please your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Lamar Hughley. I'm, uh, general contractor on the project and, um, here to answer any questions if you ask me. I have to try to carry up everything.
Very well. Anyone have questions of the applicant?
I, I do.
Commissioner Ryan, do you plan to store any hazardous material there?
No, no hazardous materials, no.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have questions of the applicant?
I, I, I do.
Commissioner Mott.
Are you expecting large semi truck deliveries?
No. It's mainly gonna be used as a staging area to, uh, load it up and go out to do work. There won't be any work conducted on the, on the premises. It'll just be a staging area to, uh, uh, stage the equipment there inside and, uh, leave out in the morning time. All the work will be done off, off-site.
Anyone else have questions? Very well. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
All right, does anyone from the public here wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Thank you, ma'am. Mo- motion by Commissioner Norwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Washington. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Onto the site plans. Site plan number one Bronson Peak Phase Two B Plat. Owners DRP Florida Five LLC. Applicants Polos and Bennett LLC, care of Guinevere Labuda. Location north of Boy Scout Road, south of Stone Cliff Drive and west of Falconhurst Lane. Miss Sanchez.
Good evening, Jean Sanchez with the Planning and Zoning Division. This is a request to recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Phase Two B Plat. Subject property is situated north of Boy Scout Road, south of Stone Cliff Drive and west of Falconhurst Lane approximately nineteen point five acres in size. The applicant has submitted the plat to create sixty single-family residential lots and open space tracks. The plat is consistent with the Ridge Major Development Plan approved by the City Council on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one as well as the Ridge PD Parcel Two Construction Site Plan approved by the Development Review Committee on June sixteen, twenty twenty-two. The DRC recommends approval. The recommended motion is to recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Plat, Bronson Peak Two, Phase Two B Plat. Staff and applicant are available for questions.
Very well. Thank you, Miss Sanchez. Anyone have questions of staff?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryan.
Okay, these, to me, it looks like these are all townhouses. Is that correct? Well, maybe there's, maybe some bungalows also.
It's not all townhouses. They're single-family, um, detached. Actually, this portion of it, some are bungalows. That's what you see. There are the smaller lots.
Oh, the small, the smaller lots aren't?
They're, right, they're smaller units.
They won't be connected.
They're, they're not attached, no, sir.
They're not, they're not townhouses. I must be looking at a different plot here. Is there any street parking? Is there? I must, I must be looking on the wrong map then.
I can't, um, recall the site plan, to be honest. I recall having some street. I thought they were on street parking closer to the amenity and the central part of, um, not necessarily on this. Portion of Bronson Peak, um.
I don't see any here on this.
There's one closer to the amenity tracks, I think that portion has been plotted already as well.
What about the, um, setbacks for the garages?
Do you recall the setbacks? We, so, I, I, I'm sorry, it seems like, I don't know, but the. This is not the site plan, this is the plat, so I can't recall the setbacks, I'm happy to give that to you. Maybe email you at a later time what the setbacks were for this specific, um, phase of Bronson Peak.
So this will come back to us?
No, no, this is the plat, this would be the final division of the lots within that. This is actually at the very end.
And you don't know what the?
I, I can't recall, it's been, um, almost three years since you, it was approved. Since the major development plan was approved by City Council, so, um. We normally don't address setbacks during plats.
Well, I, I can't approve it, then, if you don't have that information, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's fine, but your approval of the setbacks and all site design requirements with the P D. You've already issued that, the recommendation of approval a few years ago. This is actually a formality of actually subdividing the plats, creating the lots. Um, I understand, and I'm happy to send you, we're happy to send you the. Site design requirements that the P D has for the ridge.
Yeah, I'll just add, this is to elaborate on what Jean was saying, this is just the recommendation of approval for the plat. Basically, what it is, is the creation of lots, easements, streets, tracks, alleys, so they can legally sell the lots, that's all this is.
Right, but, but can we ask, we ask the developer if they can modify the setbacks so a car, car could fit in there?
This was a P U D, so that's all been approved several years back when the ridge was approved, so this is.
Right, because also the applicant for the plat is not the same applicant as the ones who did the civil site plans. For this portion of the ridge, um.
I'm just worried about the people not being able to park there and block them, blocking these sidewalks, um, we seem to have that problem going on.
Yeah, so that when the P U D was adopted by the City Council, there was an ordinance that was adopted that dictated all those standards. Such as setbacks, garage setbacks, parking, there was a master plan that was approved. This is literally just creation of lots, act, and easements and alleys and tracks and things like that, so they can pull building permits and sell the lots. Cause state law requires that for them to sell lots.
Right, no, I, I understand that, but, you know, I just don't want to be any issues down the road. Okay.
All right, anyone else have questions of staff?
It's, it's literally creating, yes, property boundaries.
Very well. Thank you, Miss Sanchez. Is applicant available? Okay. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? Very well. Thank you, Miss Sanchez. Is anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
Mister Chairman, I would recommend approval of the Bronson Peak Phase Two B Plat.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Commissioner Mark. Do I have a second? Say my Commissioner Doomey, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two on site plans, I N B Homes, major development plan, owners Kelly Park Road Property L L C. Applicants, I N B Homes care of John Ryan Adams, location two, five, eight, four, West Kelly Park Road. As this is quasi-judicial, I need to ask, has anyone on the board had any ex parte communication on this matter? Very well. Mister How.
Good evening, thank you, Mister Chairman Bobby How, planning manager, for the record. Uh, you'll probably recall back in November of twenty twenty-four, a mass, a master plan, K P I rezoning came forward for this project. Uh, I N B Homes, the, and this is the major development plan that's being, uh, requested for approval tonight. And this major development plan proposes development of subdivision consisting of future non-residential uses and two hundred and fifty townhome uses. Subject to the requirements of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. Vicinity map shows location of the property, it's twenty-five eighty-four West Kelly Park Road. Future land use and zoning, uh, shows what's in the K P I Form-Based Code area. The major development plan proposes development of the property with two hundred and fifty townhomes at a density of seven and a half dwelling units per acre. And a ten point three three non acre, and ten point three three acre non-residential parcel. Located in the northern portion of the site, that's reserved for future non-residential development, that was shown on the master plan that was approved. This parcel will be interconnected by a vehicular and pedestrian connection to the residential portion of the site. Access to the site is proposed via West Kelly Park Road, via right and left turn lanes, as you can see those on the major development plan. A dedication of a thirty-foot wide strip for future right-of-way needs is detailed on the major development plan. Within this strip, a twelve-foot wide bicycle trail will be constructed by the developer to help facilitate the construction of the regional trail system. That's conceptually proposed within the Kelly Park Form-Based Code area, and you can see some of that is taking shape with some of the, uh, previously approved developments that are out there. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross-access to properties to the west and east at such a time they develop. In accordance with requirements of the Form-Based Code, fifteen percent of the site will remain as open space. Common recreational elements include community swimming pool, green space with an internal trail system. Passive open space recreation areas and the dedication of the bike trail along Kelly Park Road. The major development plan is consistent with requirements of the comprehensive plan and the master plan that was approved. Development Review Committee recommends approval, and the recommended motion this evening is approval. Uh, myself and the applicant are available for questions.
Very well, thank you, sir. Anyone have questions of staff?
I do.
Commissioner Washington.
Two or three, I'm sorry. The communications tower. In the, um, staff report. It talks about the stormwater. And, uh, it says the. Water management tract is proposed to be located around the communications tower. But then it goes on to say that the fall zone is provided adjacent to the fall tower. So I'm a little curious about that, I can understand why you might have the water management tract around the tower. Why is that the fall zone only adjacent instead of around?
It should probably say the fall zone is adjacent to it, that's probably what I meant to say when I wrote that. Uh, the fall zone is within that water retention track, the whole idea behind the fall zone is so if the tower falls, it doesn't crash into any buildings.
Okay, so, so it's clear that, that the tower could fall in any direction. It would not, uh, damage anything.
And ideally, the way they're designed, some of them is as they collapse on themselves. Don't know about that one, but that's how a lot of them are designed.
Okay, couple more questions, the, uh, it mentions the, um, the village center. And where would that be, uh, in, uh, in this document, the, the development plan?
So the sentence I think you're referring to, it says the transition character zone is intended to provide a buffer between the high-density intensity village center zone. And the low-intensity areas outside the Form-Based Code area. It's not in the village center. This is a carryover from when the major or the master plan was approved. This is in the transitioned character zone, and if you read the actual transition character zone in the Form-Based Code, that's the exact language. It's pretty basically to provide a buffer from very high intense development to low intense development, so that's where this falls.
Okay, last one, and then I'm, I'm not gonna promise I'm finished, but this should be the last. According to the map, it seems like there is a, a parcel that is south. Of the project, and according to the staff report, it says that it's in progress. And it's, uh, zoning is transitional. So tell me about that.
Yeah, so what that means is that there's been properties within the city historically that have been annexed, and they've never been assigned a future land use or a zoning. So used to, long ago, they were called zip zoning, zoning in progress. When the twenty nineteen code was adopted, that became transitional. There was never a future land use assigned to that property, so that's why it's in progress. So the owner would have to come and apply for a future land use designation to that at one point in time. It would have to be an owner who decides to make that application.
So I would imagine that the owner, um. Would develop it, they'll be consistent with what we are, with the major development plan that we're looking at tonight.
Yeah, and that property.
Sticking out there like a sore thumb.
Ideally, that owner of that property would probably wanna do that, so they're located to the south, they're not within this parcel here, they are an adjacent property.
Right, it also happens to be adjacent to my subdivision, so that's why I had a specific interest in that. Thank you.
Very well, Commissioner Ryan.
It'll probably take about four years to complete this project, don't you think?
That would be a question for the developer to answer, as to how long their to build-out timeframe would be.
That, that's what, that's what I'm guessing. Will there be enough capacity to handle the wastewater in four years?
That would be a question for the Public Services Department, as this has gone through the future land use stage and the zoning, they didn't ca- indicated that there is. However, the way the comprehensive plan reads is that that all has, there has to be capacity prior to the issuance of a development order. This is not a development order at this time, this is just basically a, uh, uh, preliminary plan prior to the development order. The good development order would be the construction site plan.
Is, is there any plans to increase the capacity before twenty twenty-nine?
That would be a question for the Public Services Department, sir. I can't answer that.
We have no concern over that, right?
The, the prior, the previous staff that was at Public Services said this meant all that. They said that this satisfied everything, but like I said before. The comprehensive plan says prior to the issuance of a development order, which this is not, there has to be the capacity in the system. So we're not at the development order stage yet.
Thank you.
Does the D R C not address that?
D R C does, yes, and Public Services sits on the D R C.
All right. Very well. Anyone else have questions of staff?
Yeah, one more.
All right, Commissioner Washington.
I lied.
Want to hold that against you.
All right, so this project, you have, uh, Chandler Road, uh, that runs alongside this project, I'm very familiar with it. But I think, uh, we also approved another project that's on the east side of Chandler Road. And, um, what about Chandler Road, has anybody taken responsibility to develop that into what, what we call the, um, class D, uh, road in the pocket?
Chandler Road is not a road, it's actually private property, so that would all have to be hammered up between the, the developers. Of those properties, it's my understanding there's some, uh, plans in the works for that, but it's not public property. It's not a right-of-way, it's a private piece of property.
And who owns it?
I believe it's the Orchid Estates H O A.
What'd you say?
I think it's the Orchid Estates H O A that owns that.
All right, any more questions of staff? All right, is applicant here available? All right, hang on one second, sir, let me see if anyone has questions. Does anyone have questions of the applicant? No? Very well. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion. Thank you, ma'am. Motion by Commissioner Norwood, do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Washington, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Do we have any old business? Any new business?
One item, uh, real quick before we adjourn, I just wanted to remind everybody, uh, next Wednesday at five P M is the Wild Oaks. Joint Workshop with the City Council, uh, to go over their proposed code amendments for the Wild Oaks Project. And if you recall that we had part one of that in February twenty twenty-four. Yes, sir, next Wednesday night at five P M.
Do you have any idea how long that meeting will take?
Probably about an hour.
Okay.
You have dinner plans?
We'll have another meeting, it's important, at seven, so I need to squeeze both in.
I think we'll be done by then.
Very well. Anything else?